I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Morganton City Council, February the 5th, 2024. Renee, do we have anyone for public comments?
No.
No, I'll ask Chris Jernigan if he'll lead us to the pledge of allegiance to the flag. If you please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call on the Reverend George Logan, New Day Christian Church, to lead us in an invocation. George, thank you for being here.
Glad to be here. Heavenly Father, we thank you for our time together. We thank you so much for the council, for the mayor, for the city manager. We thank you for the privilege of living in this community of Morganton, North Carolina. It's such a privilege, such an honor. We thank you for the good things that are going on here. We thank you for the people who have invested their time and their lives to making it a good place to live, a most loving place to live. And Father, we know that there are things that are still ahead of us, things, issues that are still necessary to, to, to take care of and to, and to get in front of. And I guess that you give this council and the citizens of Morganton the grace to accomplish your will for this community. We're so very grateful to know that it's very much in your will to have towns like this that believe in its citizens, that value each citizen, that has a police and public safety officers that look over this town. We ask, Father, that you continue to bless our public safety officers, Chief Wistnut and his, his staff and officers that, that live in this town. We thank you for giving them the strength, the ability, the insight, the wisdom to do their, their responsibilities. And so we give you all the glory for the good things that are taking place here, even as you're taking us even further and higher and helping us to accomplish even more. In Jesus' mighty name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, George. I'd like to introduce council to my far right, Wendy Cato, Mayor Protem, Chris Jernigan, City Council, Louie Vina, our City Attorney. I'm Ronnie Thompson, your mayor. To my left, Sally Sandy, our City Manager, Butch McWayne, City Council, Chris Hawkins, City Council. Renee Carswell is our City Clerk, and our interpreters for the deaf, Danette Stillman Bridges and Ernest Williams IV. Under public advocacy, we have a proclamation I'd like to read for Black History Month, February 2024. Whereas noted historian Dr. Carter Woodson announced the second week of February as quote Negro History Week in 1926, in order to increase public awareness and appreciation of the important role that African Americans have played in shaping America's history. And whereas the United States government officially recognized Negro History Week in 1976 as part of the U.S. Bicentennial, expanding it to Black History Month. And whereas America is a melting pot of cultures and ethnicities, all part of the land of the free, Black History Month fosters cultural awareness and understanding while encouraging education about contributions made by Americans of color. And whereas the celebration of Black History Month is a positive way of recognizing the culture and history of African Americans as vital to the core beliefs and values of this society. And whereas the contributions and partnerships of African Americans have been vital to the development and growth of the city of Morganton. And whereas the theme of the Burke County NAACP for Black History Month is quote, "Black History is American History. Celebrate, Educate, Elevate," highlighting Black History past, present, and future, giving all children the opportunity to learn, understand, and embrace the contributions people of color have made to the nation. Now therefore, I'm Ronnie Thompson, Mayor of the City of Morganton, on behalf of the Morganton City Council, to hereby proclaim the month of February 2024 as Black History Month and encourage the local citizenry to participate in activities that foster awareness, partnerships, and appreciation of African American contributions to shaping the history of Morganton, Burke County, North Carolina, and America. Proclaim this fifth day of February 2024. Ronnie Thompson, Mayor, Renee Carswell, City Clerk, to have a motion to accept this proclamation.
So move.
Have a second?
A second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I'll ask Wendy Cato to please present that proclamation to Alicia Connolly for some comments.
Thank you. Good evening, and to the Honorable Mayor Thompson, to the Honorable City Council, and to each of you in attendance this evening. It is with honor that I accept the 2024 Black History Proclamation on behalf of the Burke County NAACP. February is the month that is dedicated to recognizing the achievements and contributions of African Americans throughout history. And it is also the month that persons all over reflect upon the struggles and the triumphs in the Black community. But every month of the year, we should do this. This year, as has already been spoken, the Burke County NAACP chose the theme "Black History is American History. Celebrate, Educate, and Elevate." I expound upon a statement made by President Biden. "We must educate on the good, the bad, and the full truth of the history of this country. And we must preserve and protect the histories and the truths for the next generation. We must educate, not erase, our histories." Thank you, City of Morganton, for all of the partnerships. Because united and working together, there are no limits. On high, high, we will elevate. Let us continue to move forward for a just and equitable, inclusive society here in the City of Morganton. You are invited to celebrate and commemorate with us on February the 24th, from 10:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. at College Street Recreation Center. Remember, Black History is American History. Celebrate, educate, and elevate. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia, so much. I have some announcements. City Council Workshop will be Friday, February 23rd, from 8:15 to 4:00 p.m. at the Morganton Community House. Have an announcement about Bethel Park closure and renovations started today. A reopen date is not available at this time. The renovations are expected to take up to one year. While these renovations are being made, please continue to enjoy the City of Morganton's other beautiful public parks, including Catalba Meadows, Freedom Park, Carbon City Park, Grexel Heritage Park, Martin Luther King Junior Park, and Martha's Park. The next announcement is that the 30th Annual ACC Chili Cook-Off will be on Friday, March 15th, 11:00 a.m. to 1:30 at the Morganton Community House. Tickets are on sale now. They are $10 each and can be purchased at the Main Street office in downtown Morganton or online through the Morganton City website. Tickets will be available at the door. Upcoming events, actually a current event. Today is our City Attorney's birthday. I'd like to wish him congratulations and happy birthday. Some current news. I'll call on City Manager to talk about a situation with Dancing with the Stars.
Absolutely. I just want to try to get the word out that the event that was to happen later this week has been currently canceled with a possibility of being postponed. There have been some issues. And with currently, the group and Travis, who puts this on, is working with Kama to see if there is a date in the future that it could be rescheduled to. It will probably not be a Saturday if that happens because our Saturdays are taken. We are starting to receive lots of calls at Kama for refunds for tickets. Those tickets were not sold by Kama. They were sold by folks participating in that. And so if you want to do that, you need to contact who you bought your ticket from or Travis Stansell himself.
Thank you, Sally. Downtown City Hall. We have art in the, in the hall, February and March of 2024. That will be watercolor and pencil from Terry Ratchford. Terry's a self-taught watercolor and colored pencil artist from southern Gaston County. Terry's art is inspired by objects experienced and seen around her every day. Her work is an opportunity to revisit the childlike joy of being surprised. Our pop-up winter farmer's market will be Saturday, this Saturday, February 10th, from 8, 9:00, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at 111 North Green Street at Kama Performing Arts Center, Sunday, February the 25th, at 3:00 o'clock will be Johnny Cash, the official concert. And Sally, I noticed that Kama's gonna have some Peking, Peking acrobats later and also some ballet. So they brought a wide, wide view of, of things coming recent, in, in the near future. Do we have anything from Municipal Power Agency?
We do. Not at this time.
Consent agenda consists of four items. Would you cover that, please?
Yes. The consent agenda, for those of you viewing at home, include minutes from the meeting from January the 8th, setting an advertisement date for unpaid, unpaid real estate taxes, and that date will be March 6, 2024. That's a statutory requirement that we have. And then consideration of approving a contract with Tyler Technologies for several pieces of their software to help us in HR and time and attendance and, and just completing our suite of software from them. And that is for $128,719. That is included in the current budget. And then also approval of a budget amendment recognizing proceeds from the sale of timber. You'll recall that last month, we moved those proceeds to the Capital Reserve Fund, but we forgot to do the other half, which was to receive the money to start with. So we thought we'd do that this month. That's in the amount of $148,678.
Does the council ha, wish to have anything removed from the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Have a second.
Second.
All in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Under new business, we have a public hearing and consideration of a rezoning request to change the zoning for .68 acres of property located at Zero South Sterling Street from medium intensity district corridor overlay to high intensity district corridor, corridor overlay. This is a public hearing, correct?
It is.
I'd like to call the public hearing to order. Would anyone wish to speak?
Wendy is here to present the item.
And I'll call Wendy Smith, please, to give us some information and clarification.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy.
So Chad, if you could bring up the current zoning image. There you go. So the property in question is the one noted as Zero South Sterling Street in the yellow there on the corner of Moose Street and South Sterling Street. The property is currently vacant and is being used for parking for Momentum Car Care that is located on the adjacent property at 1908 South Sterling Street there in the orange. You can see the difference in the yellow and the orange? Orange is high intensity district in which these motor vehicle repair services are allowed. The yellow is medium intensity district in which those are not allowed. I will say that from a planning perspective, it is somewhat unusual that the zone changes in the middle of a block instead of over the course of the street. Generally, when that happens, it's a block back from the corridor of some sort. We did have an advertise, public advertisement and advertisement to the surrounding neighborhoods. We had a planning and zoning hearing last month about this rezoning. Planning and zoning commission was in unanimous support for changing Zero South Sterling Street to be HID, similar to remainder of the development down that side of the street all the way to the interstate. And in some cases, all from West Parker Road on, all the way on the other side of the street. This will allow the expansion of the successful business that we have in town. I do understand they want to continue to use it for the parking that they are utilizing it for now, only more formalized. So in order to process an application, to allow them to pave the lot, part of the lot, not all of the lot, but part of the lot, and to do some updated landscaping and those sorts of things, it does need to be rezoned for that. The property immediately across Moose Street to that is undeveloped. There's also a steep topography change there, such that if there was a house built on that lot, it's, it's available for a variety of commercial and residential activities. But if there was a residential use put on that lot, it would, wouldn't be directly facing that parking lot. Likewise, the lot to the rear is also undeveloped. And they're the ones that sold it to the people in the front for commercial purposes, anyway.
Thank you, Wendy. Would anyone like to speak in favor or against? This is a public hearing. It's your chance to, to speak for this issue. I'm seeing one approach. Public hearing's now closed. What's the wish of council?
I'll enter a motion to approve the rezoning of Zero South Sterling Street, which is pin number 2703806489, from medium intensity district with corridor overlay to high intensity district with corridor overlay, which is consistent with the adopted Mission 2030 Comprehensive Plan and is considerable, considered suitable as creating a transition between zones and across a street boundary rather than in the middle of a block. Provides more security for property owners of knowing what types of development may in the future be constructed on adjacent lots and therefore reduces risks associated with development. The development of the site with general commercial uses is consistent with and fulfills the original expectation of Mission 2030 Comprehensive Plan use, Comprehended Land Use Plan, pardon me, for the site. And preserving the corridor overlay will ensure consistency of development with a pleasant presentation to the streetscape for passerby's along South Sterling Street frontage. And utility or tragic traffic impacts from future developments can be managed at the time of development.
Thank you, Butch.
It's a lot of words, isn't it?
Yeah.
I was hoping you would volunteer. I have a motion on the floor to have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Butch.
Yes.
Next is a consideration of approval of a lease agreement between the City of Morganton and AT&amp;T for location of telecommunications antennas on the Monopine Tower located at 105 Steeple Heights Lane. Louis?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Everyone, I think, is familiar with the Monopine off West Union Street, which is actually on Steeple Heights Lane. That tower has been, since it was constructed, has been used solely by the city for communications with the public safety department. Of course, we've always had, or for a long time, cities had a policy of encouraging co-location of any new telecom antennas on existing towers or structures. And the Monopine is certainly one such structure. It is structurally capable of handling telecom antennas. We've been approached by AT&amp;T about, we'll use the term leasing or licensing, space on this Monopine for telecom antennas. And this, the proposal that has been, that is before you, would see them, well, let me back up a second. What they want at this point in time is to buy an option to lease the space on the tower. That's so they will have several months to finalize their plans. They've already submitted some preliminary plans to the Department of Development Design, which, based on the review so far, indicates it would be suitable. They have also done an engineering analysis to confirm to our satisfaction that the, the Monopine could support these antenna. The proposed lease, if they enter into it at the, during the option, would be for 10 years. And of course, it would not be exclusive to AT&amp;T. If, if another possible user came along, we would consider that and AT&amp;T would, would not have any exclusive right to it. The proposal would be that the license fee for the first year would be $1,400 per month and would then increase 2% per month for each year thereafter. It's a lengthy, the proposed document is very lengthy and has lots of exhibits. But this is now before you for consideration.
What's the wish of council?
I'll make a motion to approve an option and license agreement granting AT&amp;T Incorporated an option to enter into a license agreement or lease for an initial term of 10 years for location and operation of telecommunications antennas and related equipment on the city-owned Monopine Tower at 105 Steeple Heights Lane, and to authorize the mayor and/or city manager to execute such agreement and any other necessary documents.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Wendy. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda is a consideration of adopting a resolution of intent to exchange real estate properties with Western Piedmont Community College. Louis?
That's mine also, yes. Mr. Mayor, this is obviously following up on what we discussed for a long time. The city-owned property along Vine Arden Road, on both sides of Vine Arden Road, just this side of the wastewater plant, totaling about 26 acres, all basically undeveloped, heavily wooded property, and stretching along the river as well. Western Piedmont wants to acquire that property for the relocation of the Emergency Services Training Center that's currently on their property on Hain Creek, in a much larger, suitable area for their development. At the same time, of course, the city has been looking into acquiring some of Western Piedmont's property along what's now called Patrick Murphy Drive for the possible location of a future public service station, which has long been considered and planned. It is that property that has been identified of Western Piedmont's that the city, that they were willing to convey to the city. It's about six acres at, basically at the corner of Patrick Murphy Drive and Ammons Drive, which is the road that leads back to the agricultural center. It's certainly, the acreage is different, but the land which the city would acquire is far more valuable for, that's an understatement, per acre, both because of its location and because of its topography. On the other hand, the land, the reason that the college wants the land on Vine Arden is it's a large tract of land that's suitable and adjoins the river for possible future training development purposes. So the actual values of the property are very similar. Exchange of properties between public bodies doesn't require of the kind of advertising that we're used to for, normally for acquiring or selling property. So the proposal is simply to approve exchange of these two properties. We have drafted, this is by coordination with, between the college and the city and the respective attorneys and all, and surveyors, deeds for each, one from the city to the college, one from the college to the city. And this resolution would simply authorize that exchange.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to adopt a resolution approving conveyance to Western Piedmont Community College of two tracts totaling approximately 26.87 acres on Vine Arden Road, and in exchange, accepting conveyance from Western Piedmont Community College of a tract of approximately six acres on Patrick Murphy Drive, and authorizing mayor and/or city manager to sign deed and any other necessary documents.
Thank you, Wendy. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much. Next is consideration of approval of a contract for engineering services with McGill Associates, Associates for the North Green Street Streetscape Project, and approval of a budget amendment to establish a capital project fund. Sally?
Yes. So you will recall that for several years, we have been looking at continuing our streetscape work, and that the next phase, if you will, would be the two blocks on North Green Street, starting at Union Street and heading up toward Patterson. So, so going up toward where the old SunTrust building is. We were very fortunate in getting some grant monies. In the last round of grant money through the Department of Commerce, we received $450,000 of a rural transformation grant to go toward this project. We have monies budgeted in all of our utility funds in the current budget year to help with doing this project, upgrading utilities, putting utilities underline, underground sidewalk improvements, those parking improvements, those kinds of things. What we need to do is hire an engineer, and we've been working on that. Issued RFQs, received six submittals, selected two firms that we did in-person presentation and interviews with. And at the end of the day, we were very pleased and recommend you allowing us a contract with McGill Associates in the amount of $355,600 for designing, bidding, and getting us to the point where we can award this project. And I will tell you, the staff felt very comfortable. They've done this type of work in other places, and we feel very comfortable to be allowed to work with them.
Okay. What's the wish of council?
I'd like a motion to approve a contract with McGill Associates in the amount of $355,560 to perform the design, bidding, and awarding phase of the North Green Street Streetscape Project, and to authorize the mayor and/or city manager to execute such contract and any other necessary documents.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Butch. Any discussion? All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I need a second motion, please, for the budget amendment.
And before you make that, you'll notice it has a lot of line items in it. And that is because, as we said, this really affects every fund that we have. And so they are all paying their proportion of the contract.
What's the wish of council?
I'll make a motion to approve a budget amendment to establish a capital project fund.
Okay. Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda is consideration of a resolution of intent to permanently close and abandon a portion of Remarco Road and set a public hearing date. Louis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We've done many road closings before, and this is in the standard form of that. This is a little bit unusual in that it's not an open road. It's a former road. At the intersection of Remarco Road and Jamestown Road, many years ago... At the intersection of Remarco Road and Jamestown Road, many years ago, DOT redid, widened and slightly rerouted Jamestown Road. And when they did, the first several hundred feet of Remarco Road was moved a bit to the west, didn't really change its course, it just relocated a little. Well, that was, I think, in the 70s, it's a long time ago. When that was done, apparently, no one thought to abandon or close the old right-of-way where Remarco Road formerly was. It hasn't been used, there's no road there now, and the property that was, or the land beneath where it used to be, is part of a tract that's now owned by MS and MF Development LLC, which is, has a commercial development plan on that property. It's about six acres, and really needs the land beneath where that road used to be for completing their development. Obviously, Remarco Road has been moved, it's a city street and is perfectly fine where it is now. The city has no need for this former road right-of-way. So to do the closing and abandonment, you would need to adopt a resolution which calls for a public hearing after appropriate notice, which would be presumably at the March meeting to consider this.
Thank you, Louis. What's the wish of council?
Make a motion to adopt a resolution of intent pursuant to NCGS 168-299 to permanently close a portion of the former course of Remarco Road as shown on the attached map, retaining the existing utility easements within such street and abandoning the right-of-way of such section of street in accordance with the statute, calling for a public hearing on this matter for Monday, March 4th, 2024, and directing city staff to publish appropriate notice of hearing.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have a consideration of appointment to the Morganton Housing Authority. This is a mayoral appointment, and I move to reappoint Adriana Morris to the Morganton Housing Authority Board with a term to expire February 1st, 2029. Our next appointment is for the Cable Television Commission. I have a motion for that city council appointment.
Motion to appoint Walt Church Jr. to the at-large appointment on the Cable Television Commission to a three-year term to expire on June 1st, 2027.
Thank you, Wendy. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, that's consideration of appointment to the Library Board of Trustees. What's the wish of council?
Make a motion to reappoint John Cantrell as the city representative on the Burke County Library Board of Trustees for a term to expire February 28, 2025.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Is anything else to come before city council?
I have one thing that should, is for information for the council, since you approved this transaction, I guess, last month, the, which was the sale of the property beside the corner of the parking lot along Meeting Street to the toners of the landscape area. I can report that that was duly advertised, there were no upset bids, so that has become final, and the toners are coming by to close on that transaction later this week.
Thank you, Louis. I want to wish everybody Happy Valentine's Day. We are adjourned.